Are there any others? Well, there are also others. Well, there are some with regards... Well, there is a thing to be... or a topic to be discussed with regards to signage. Yes, that could be discussed under item 7.1. Under council members' items. So, is everyone in favor of adding school signage, as well as the YMCA and public library matters? Well, we have no decisions to take as to those matters. No, we're just deciding on adding those to the agenda. Fine, are those in favor? Carried. I also have another item. Fine, fine. That's great then. All right. Any other changes or modifications, Mr. Mayor? I would like that items 9.4 and 9.5 be added onto the agenda and that they be discussed prior to item 9.2. So, 9.4, 9.5, in between 9.1 and 9.2. Fine, are those in favor of the adoption of the agenda? As it now stands, fine. Disclosures of pecuniary interests? None, fine. Let's go on to announcements. Well, we took part in the Mental Health Awareness Walk, and I'd like to thank Councillor Chouane, who joined us in that walk. We raised over $1,000 that is... that will be given out to the Canadian Mental Health Association. Fine, tomorrow evening, we'll mark the second official opening of TVC 22 from 4 o'clock to 7:00 p.m. Yes, TVC 22 official grand opening tomorrow evening in between 4 and 7, or 5 and 7, yes. Everyone's invited. And this coming Saturday night, the Public Library will host a fashion show, as well as a wine and cheese to raise funds, and Councillor Simon has tickets. Firefighters are welcome to purchase tickets that she has on sale right now. Mr., are you one of the models at that fashion show? No, there aren't clothes that fit big people. Also, tomorrow night at the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena, there is a public meeting concerning changes with regards to the arena. Now, right after TVC 22, we'll be attending that event, that public meeting. That's fine. Could you give that to Mario, Mr. Mayor? He's got some tickets for sale, and there they are. Let's go on now to question period. If anyone has any questions, step up to the mic, give us your name and your address. Now's the time. Thank you.
Mr. Lahey, I'd like to make you aware that we support the amendment with regards to the Landry construction project. Now, with regards to the petroleum project and the offer to purchase that's involved, we're going to be demonstrating that they're purchasing property close to agricultural lands, and there's a potential risk of odors emanating from the agricultural lands because of day-to-day agricultural practices carried out there. Fine. Allemalosh753Landry, I'm one of the Mohell farm owners. I'd just like to make you aware that our stable has been there now for the past 100 years, and we'll be building new buildings at the exact same spot. The silos will be built at exactly the same spot. I have photographs with me. This is done to oversee our safety, as well as the animals' safety. Inspectors set foot in our barn to make sure that our animals are in good health, and the animals I diverted to special parks to have their hooves treated. And calves are born on straw beds. What we have now is not all that perfect, but we can't tear down this barn and set up shop at the other end of the property. Even then, when we stir up the septic area, it's going to give out a smell, and it's going to give out a smell that will impact neighboring properties, especially when we spread out manure. If we would have renovated the older standing building, we could have housed 60 or more cows, but it's too much of a dangerous building, and it's a fire risk. That's why we want to build a new building. I believe if things would have been built behind the barn, well, we talk about six or seven silos? Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, but we've already put down two or three already that were considered dangerous. We still have other silos left over, covered over by plastic. There are no rats that are able to get into those. When I read the documentation, I was under the impression, and I saw this twice in the past, if one demolishes and rebuilds on part of the existing foundation, you didn't need to resort to a zoning change to honor the severance requirements. No, you're right, but we're practically rebuilding where we are now. Well, the last instance of that particular situation that I saw was about two or three years ago. Fine, well, thank you very much then. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fine. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. Good evening, Mrs. Chouane. I haven't seen you in quite a while. Name and address. Roland-Labondé, 1573 Roland Road. And my address is Prudhomme Road in Wendover. Now, I'm before council because I read in the newspaper that they were prohibiting open-air fires in Clarence and Rockland. Does this apply to rural properties or in the village proper, or in the town proper? Mr. Villeneuve? Well, there was a new bylaw that was enacted that allowed open-air fires here, there, and everywhere within the municipality. There are more restrictions attached to that in urban sectors, notably Rockland, taking into account the size of the fire and that the fire has to be covered to a certain extent. We've also put an end to the prohibition of open-air fires to prevent brush fires, especially during the springtime. So, the prohibition now, however, has been lifted for this purpose, but people still need permits to put fires or to set open-air fires. Can I go on to another question? Fine. My God, okay then. My other question is this. When I'd asked the question with regard to my daughter's ditch, when the gentleman had forwarded his report, he was supposed to meet me on that site, and he never set foot on the property because he told me, "Well, you know, we'll discuss things during this coming spring because we're in the winter." But in the spring, he forwarded a report, and he never came to see me. "Well, I invited you to attend my office, and you never showed up." "No, because I would have showed up for nothing." Fine. If one handles this file from time to time, then another one, you know, handles a file from time to time, it doesn't amount to anything. You're right. If they want to waste their time, they're paid for this. "Well, no problem with that, sir, no problem." My question is this. This gentleman was traveling on a steady basis in Toronto. How many... how much money do town councillors and town officials incur to go to Toronto? Well, we attend two conferences per year, along with two of my fellow councillors here at the table. Well, how much does it cost us? I don't have any figures right now. I don't need to have them right now. We'll try to come up with those, and we'll come up with an answer for you on that. I'd like to know, given Clarence and Rockland's expenditure or travel fees, going to Toronto, how much it costs per year? Maybe we won't need to go to Toronto. We can obtain money right here. "Well, that's where you go and obtain grants, sir." You know, "Yeah, but what... how much money shall we save?" "You have to take a look at expenditures. It costs quite a lot to go down there." "Well, fine. We'll give out the expenditures that it costs to go there with the amount of grants we obtained." "We obtained $2.3 million for ministers." "$2.3 million in grants." "Well, the minister can obtain that for you." "Well, we'll see what kind of minister will be elected, or who will be elected this coming... this coming June, the upcoming provincial elections." Fine, any other questions? Fine then, let's go on. Members' items. School signage, Mrs. Maya Simon. Whereas the Eastern Ontario Public School Board will eventually replace its signage in front of signages for electronic signage, and whereas the Performance Hall has no signage to advertise its events, and whereas possibly the YMCA and other entities might like to showcase their events, and whereas the Cultural Advisor Committee proposes that this be done in the best interest of all parties concerned, be it resolved that town council mandate community services to start up discussion... discussions with the Eastern Ontario Public School Board to determine whether they're interested in sharing the use of electronic billboards with partners. Fine, seconded by Jean-Marc. Questions? Mr. Boucher, are you in agreement with this? Yes, I am in agreement with this, Mr. Mayor. Are those in favor then? Carried, thank you. Consent items? Are there any items that you'd like to remove from the agenda? Well, item 8.4, as I mentioned earlier on, of course, we'll deal with this in a closed meeting. Yes. What we'll do is that we'll approve all others, and we'll retire in a closed meeting to deal with item 8.4. But we're not dealing with section 4 or section 9. No, we'll be dealing with section 8, from 8.1 to 8.3, and then we'll discuss Mrs. Louise's matter later on. Fine. Fine then, all right? Fine. Would you care to read all of the consent items that need to be voted on? If you... Be it resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items, appearing on the regular meeting of town council agenda of May the 7th, 2018, be adopted. 8.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings, sub-A, regular meeting of April the 17th, 2018, and sub-B, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of April the 17th, 2018. 8.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings, sub-A, committee of adjustment meeting of March the 12th, 2018, and 8.3, the following recommendations from committee of the whole of April the 17th, 2018, sub-A, the Living Natural Park Development Project, list of work... of work to be performed. And 8.4, resignation of Mrs. Louise. 8.7, resignation of Mrs. Louise, who's a member of the Public Library Committee. And we'll discuss the 8.4 matter in a closed meeting. Fine, seconded by Councillor Simon. Questions? No. Are those in favor? Carried, so we'll take... I need the motion to open the closed meeting, to call it open. Well, I move, Mr. Mayor, that we adjourn shortly to discuss item 8.4. Fine, are those in favor? Carried, seconded by Councillor Zant. Fine. I need someone to come up with a motion to close the closed hearing. I move that the closed meeting be closed. Fine. Councillor Levad, you have a motion with regards to the manager of human resources? Yes, be it resolved, Mr. Mayor. Be it resolved that resolution 2018-059 be... abrogated? Be it resolved that Mr. Jerry Alm be hired as a manager of human resources and that his salary be pegged at level 5, class 5 of the salary grid for non-unionized employees, retroactive as of the 21st of March, 2018, seconded by Councillor Bellanguet. Are those in favor then? Carried, are those in favor? Are you in favor? Yes. I'm looking for someone to raise their hand. Are those in favor? Favor, are you in favor? Three, four in favor. Well, that's fine. Carried then. Let's go on now to committee reports. Approval of amendments to conditions of stage 5 of Morse's... Do you have anything on this, Councillor Zant? Fine, I do have something to this effect, yes. Whereas council approved resolution number 2018-75, giving approval to the draft plan of subdivision of stage 5 Morse's Village with the list of conditions listed under section 7 of report AME 18-13-R, and whereas the date of lapsing of the draft plan approval cannot exceed more than five years. That council approves the changes to condition 81 as stipulated in report AME 18-26-R to the draft plan of subdivision approval of Morse's Village, stage 5, seconded by Councillor Levad. Any questions? Councillor Zant? It's mostly a comment, Mr. Mayor. We discussed this at great length, but I'm very much disappointed we cannot come up with a finalized roadway because as things stand right now, we're facing here a major development there with some 600 or some odd housing units that are involved, if I'm not mistaken, Mrs. Leonard. So, if we don't have an exit out of Caron, we force everyone to drive onto Sterling and Saint-Jean, driving into town and try to make ends meet. For those people leaving home to go to work, that generates a lot of traffic from his or her house. Well, we have a traffic study that has been commissioned, paid out of development fees, that will tell us whether or not we have a traffic congestion situation on our hands or not, given this... the existing situation. Well, that... the situation will be exactly like the one at Village Morage, from Corbeille until Saint-Jean, and that's been going on for many years. And for many years now, what we consider being a collector did not run directly from Caron to Saint-Jean, and the same principle applies here. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Leonard, but it is not because the developer does not end this stretch on Alard Street. Well, the same applies to any other developments. When you get onto a property that is not owned by the developer, we put in a roundabout to ensure that future developments can connect to services. It's common practice. I understand. But if a developer doesn't show up for that property in the next 50 years, things are not... things are going to look pitiful. And I'm afraid, as usual, you know, we plan, somebody says, "Well, we can't do so," and we say, "Well, we can't do it either," and then we give them the green light. No, you see, we'll be commissioning an environmental study that's going to take a look into Brizil, Morse's Village, and all of this and all of that. And when this study comes out with appropriate conclusions, we'll look at other avenues. Well, there won't only be that exit going on to Caron. Let me tell you, Mr. Renard, there... Given the state of sidewalks on certain streets and going, the situation prevails. Well, let's wait until... and see what the study yields. Well, my concern would be the ones similar to Saint-Joseph. We told to the developer, "You don't have to develop," and then the street stopped at a particular spot. And finally, we got a lot of demand from Saint-Joseph for Saint-Joseph, and we wound up in a dire situation. Yes, but this did not apply to Saint-Joseph per se. The subdivision had been drawn up in such a way. There was always a road allowance that preexisted for that particular area. So, it's the same as... the same rules that apply to development that we dealt with on Caron Street. We have an accessory private property that will be developed in the future, and what we say is that we'll take measures to allow future developers to connect themselves onto town services. That's why we commissioned the study, because it's paid out of the development fees. Well, what kind of development does distance as one have to travel to get to that development from Caron? Well, we'd have to measure that. Well, are those in favor then? Are those in favor? Carried, that's fine. Thank you. All right. Let's go on now to item 9.4. Final adjustments to the 2018 budget. Can I read this? Well, be it resolved that council adopted bylaw 2018-54, being a bylaw to modify the operational budget for 2018 with option 1 attached here, too. Seconded by Councillor Levad. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor. I took a close look at this. Studied this matter for many hours, and when I took a look at budget number 1, we'd budgeted $1.5 million for Burgetna. Now, this year, we allowed a $3 million ceiling. And maybe our accountant can answer this query on my behalf. We're not talking about fire halls or parking. We're talking about option 1 with regards to the operational budget that deals with daycare centers. We're not... You said that we should insert that in between 9.1 and 9.2. So, we're on to 9.4 right now, as you asked that we deal with in order. So, we're on to item 9.4. You're dealing with another item entirely. I apologize, my mistake, Mr. Mayor. That's... that's all right, Councillor Lelant. So... So, 9.4 was moved and seconded. What I'm wondering with regards to 9.4, we're dealing with cuts again. I'm taking a look at a reduction of $1,000 for individual town councillors' budgets. This is an electoral year, and our town councillors will be asked more and more to take part in events, and we need to cut their individual stipends. And we're asked also to reduce the number of portable washrooms in parks, the cancellation of free swimming pool hours, free... and reduction in the spreading of gravel. Let me tell you. So, what's your problem now? Let me... let me tell you. I think that we should cut in the fat. There are many items that we'll be discussing tonight. Let me give you an example. If we want to obtain money to compensate... well, to reduce daycare centers from 11 to 2.2%, we have $59,000 stemming from the province given to us to renovate Louriez Street. Now, nothing prevents us that it be spent for that purpose, but also to take that $59,000 that has already been pre-budgeted and to transfer it for that purpose. There's a means of balancing the books without proceeding to dire cuts such as those. Mr. Dinwiddie, I'd just like to make you aware that option that is recommended was option 1 and not option 2, where all the cuts are set out so that everybody's on the same page. We're dealing with the increase, the basic... with the basic tax rate. Option 2 was that option detailing the reductions that were proposed during the course of budgetary talks. We analyzed where we could put in cuts or implement talks. Those are those areas where possibly budgetary cuts could be implemented. That's the reason why it was brought back to council, but that's part of... part 2. Now, in answer to Councillor Lelant's question is this. Can we make use of the financing stemming from grants? But this would be a one-time action because it's capital financing. Next year, we wouldn't have access to that, and we have to take a look at the source of financing with regard to a project. We can't deficit an operation... we can't finance an operational deficit by tapping into our debt reserves. When you're taking a look at cutting either the outstanding debt or the development fund, both stem from taxpayer money there. Both are financed by taxpayer money, but it's not the proper way of looking at this. Well, nothing prevents us from transferring an amount of money from one envelope to another. Let's go to option 3. Let's bring it up to 5%. We'll incur less of a deficit. Well, we're just in the process of discussing here, Mr. Mayor. I understand. But if we adopt option 1, there'll be an increase of municipal taxes of 1.01 that will bring us to 3.95%. Why is everyone called to pay for services that not just everyone uses? Well, we were asked by administration not to raise taxes. We told them that we didn't want to increase daycare center services to 11%. There are only two options, either option 1 or 2. One is increasing taxes, and the other one is to cut where we might not want to cut. Well, you see, that's what they're... you see, that's where they're showing you where cuts could be implemented if you wish to resort to cuts. What we already stated that we didn't want to implement an 11% increase in daycare centers, and we didn't want to increase taxes. While there are... Mr. Dinwiddie, I'd just like to ask a particular question, Mr. Mayor, because we have to come up with a solution tonight because it does impact the taxation rate that needs to be approved before we start printing out tax invoices. And the other question that I'd like to bring to your attention is that we have to go back to the basis, to the basics. We have to come up with a $89,000 shortfall. If we're not dipping into daycare income... Well, we have to. Well, you see, we come... we give out contracts, and one contract should end at the end of July, or June, should I say, and we could certainly save money out of that. Well, it depends on the budget. If the budget was awarded, if it was taken into account in the budget, it needs to be determined as to when it does stop coming into effect. And maybe we stated all... maybe it would be advisable to cut services offered during the course of statutory holidays. Well, you know, we couldn't realize enough savings to impact any decisions taken with regards to daycare centers. I was... I asked that we be given data to take care of daycare centers. Well, I don't know why municipalities take care of daycare centers. We receive money from the government that takes care of daycare centers. Well, we receive money from the counties. Well, you see, the counties ought to have looked into those. They give grants to families in need of help. I understand that something eventually we went looking, getting rid of. If this is to be the way of... our way of doing thing as things, in my view of things, it should be managed by some other entity. And I don't think it's fair, really, that we would impose to all citizens throughout Clarence and Rockland to pay higher taxes to cover daycare centers paid by a minority of taxpayers. We've all gone through this paying daycare center fees. It's a question of offer and demand. Daycare center costs are not all that high as opposed to Ottawa. I have an acquaintance that pays daycare fees in Ottawa that... and they're asking $25 to $40 per day more. $35 per day for children 12 years of age or older or under. It's not all that much. And government has also increased family allowances from $200 to $680. Now, parents already have help. Now, parents already have help and you already have an income tax deduction stemming from this and daycare centers are deductible from income tax also. Two salaries close to $100,000 or let's say $80,000. We had, we're talking about, let's say, a mean average family salary in between $120,000 to $180,000. Well, it depends on salaries, gains, some earn $70,000 for, both combined, but some are eligible for grants. The government will pay for the difference. So I think that for an individual that's alone, a single family unit, an individual family, a family unit member or an individual that has a child that earns under $40,000 is helped out by the government. Well, government might pay out 30% or, but when the family income is quite low, I always mentioned that $43,000 was the threshold, but it could be lower, but the government will sponsor this to the tune of 100%. They have a lot of help, they have a lot of benefits that they can tap into. Well, you have to cut on some things if you have children at daycare centers. That's quite normal, but in my view, it's unfair to impose to everyone daycare center fees. We're sponsoring sports activities for youngsters or toddlers and that's part and parcel of our infrastructure plan. That's fine. You see, I met someone the other day from the school board and he told me that the government was thinking of asking for a higher rental fees in classrooms to pay for the electrical bills and the caretaker fees and the small rent that we're paying right now will be increased because of the fact that they'll be downloading all of the fees on our shoulders that, that really is run by the school. Well, at a certain point in time, municipalities are all, will have to get together and say to the Ministry of Education, listen, either you assume costs for daycare centers and, or give us exactly the amount of money we need to operate those centers or we might take the responsibility to do so. And if we incur the deficit, the government should be called upon to pay for this. I don't think this matter should be managed by us as a town council. Well, let's see what happens and this is instance, and maybe after, come October, we'll be doing something else. Well, if we're to increase the deficit, I'm in agreement with 5% to 6% minimum increase at present. And maybe increase it by another percentage or by several other percentage points in subsequent years. Well, tonight, Mr. Mayor, if we're dealing with the shortfall that's generated by the budget, we're not here to discuss about county, what county responsibility and so on and so forth. Let's, if we are to review the system as a whole, it's your prerogative to do so, but we have to address $189,000 shortfall right now. Instead of, you know, approving a 2% increase, let's go on to 4% or 5% because we have to cut somewhere else. Well, we've already increased fees by 5% and we'll still, we're still heaping on another increase. I mean, at a certain point in time, we have to, I remained at home, I didn't send my children over to the daycare center, but you're staying at home, but you're paying for those who make use of daycare services. Yes, but I do pay also for people that make use of public transit. Look, we're paying for hockey activities. Council of Belleguet, I'm sympathizing, I sympathize with the parents and I know that daycare center fees are quite expensive. We had preschool aged children, we play, we paid very, we paid high fees to have them taken care of. And I hope that the provincial government eventually will come up with a program that the province of Quebec has right now. But it's a provincial responsibility. The onus should not be upon the municipality to pay for daycare education and public transit. If we're talking about Ottawa, it can be done, but education and daycare centers should not be a municipal responsibility and it should not be heaped upon individual taxpayers' shoulders. However, if daycare centers incur a deficit, if this service that we started up needs to be a service that is self-paying, well, we have a problem right now. We have a shortfall. I don't want to support option 1 where we increase the taxes. I'd like to support option 2 where we cut, or I don't support option 2, or option 3, increasing the fees by some 11%. I believe it behooves the daycare center people to come up with a fair balance and to perform cuts that need to be, to be implemented. Well, we can adopt option 3, we're the ones that will decide upon this. You know, I'm in agreement with the mayor. We should approve option 3 with an increase of certain fees, but before those fee increases become effective as of the 1st of July, well, parents are waiting for the rates to be imposed. That should come up with areas to be cut. Well, 83% of the budget is earmarked to pay salaries. There's 17% of the budget that we can play around with. It's impossible to, to pay for that shortfall. We can't cut down on the food that is offered to the children of those daycare centers. We have only a 17% leeway. Well, how about overtime? That was earmarked to pay for overtime employees for training purposes? Yes, last year, we had supplementary or we had overtime, but we had to move daycare centers from one venue to another venue and that was completely explained in my previous reports. We should not have a debate on this. We have to have a debate on the $189,000 shortfall that we're facing right now. We've already proven that we couldn't cut in daycare expenditures. We need to come up with other cuts. We have to cut elsewhere. Let's say we come up with a 6% threshold. A gentleman sent me an email, stated that in the town of Ottawa, rates were a hike by some 18%. And he said, if we had access to such a service, we would have it in a heartbeat, especially if my child receives quality, services provided by qualified early childhood educators. They're very well-trained and well-prepared, you know, you can't, and they go to school. We can't, you know, buy a Cadillac and hope to pay every month for Volkswagen. Well, look, it, we have to expect people that pay for services to make use of services to pay for those. It's normal. I sympathize with the parents. I have, I've had 4 children in my lifetime. Depending on where I was, if I had my children stay at different daycares, depending on the rate they were asking, well, I had to pay. As I said, everything is tax deductible right, as things stand right now. There are a lot of people that have 2 salaries, can qualify to obtain grants, so people need to ask for those grants. Well, if we go with the 11% that is recommended, that's 21% total increases, total increase, and that's quite a shock. Well, we're not called upon to manage this as a municipality. The criteria, well, I believe the school board should decide upon that. We should approach school board that it makes cuts so that it can help us pay for this. You see, the deductions, the income tax deductions, we're the ones that are called upon to pay for this and somewhere along the line, the parent has to pay for this. We can't heap everything on our taxpayer's shoulders. Mr. Mayor, council asked from staff to come up with options. Option number 2 is an option that was discussed at the executive committee level and we spent hours worth of discussions with regards to this, but let me tell you that the first option, the first option brought to you is a new one that has no impact on taxpayers and we came up with $58,000 with regards to the increase, with the allocation of fees to the construction department. Those are construction fees that we can tap into and bring it directly into our budget and that'll give us a bit of relief in our $58,000 cap to budget and does not have any impact on services. Yes, but we get money, we tap into money from other departments to pay for shortfalls in other departments. Let me suggest option 3, an increase of 6%. Well, you stated 5% earlier on, well, fine, 5% then. Well, it could be 5% this year and 6% next year. Council of Laverre. Mr. Mayor, when we took a look at the 11% original increase that was, that was proposed, it would have cost $13,700 per year for an individual that's sending his or her toddler to the, to the daycare center. Well, it all depends, they can recoup that amount or they can deduct that through their income tags. Now, we're called upon to increase those fees because last year, we wound up with more than, over and above a $400,000 deficit. I said to myself, well, maybe there was, there was a mistake last year. Well, maybe not a mistake because I know that we moved venue, 3 daycare centers from one venue to another. At the St. Patrick daycare, when it was moved, did not have any clients for a certain point in time, but this will not occur this year. This was all explained and set out in our report. In our, in the January report that I forwarded to you, I identified those amounts, I even identified the overtime that you're now questioning. And the other point that we need to discuss, Mr. Mayor, is a rebate matter. This is owed and payable as of 2020, but we're mixing apples and oranges here. Let's talk about the daycare center. Mr. Keel, Mr. Mayor, let's clarify this matter here. The management of the daycare centers, since my arrival here at the town of Clarence Rockland for the past 4 years and even then, before then, they've always incurred a budgetary deficit each and every year. This is something, Mr. Mayor, this is something that we're in the process of looking into and coming up with a fair budget and a balanced budget. We improved things in the past 5 years, but there are still some budgetary constraints with regards to the running of daycare centers that we can't go around, but that we've always incurred deficits with that particular budget in previous years. Mr. Mayor, even if you vote for a 5% increase, they'll still have to resort to cuts. Well, they'll have less cuts to resort to, but there's, herein lies my problem. We can't risk matching $100,000 with regards to an overall several million dollar budget. At the end of the year, well, you see, at the end of the year, did we have a deficit at the end of the year last year? Yes, did anybody go to jail? Even if you said it was illegal? No, this is just a question, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Surpluses and deficits. If you have a deficit, the first call on your taxes for the next year, if you don't have sufficient reserves, will be the amount of your deficit. Lucky for the city of Clarence Rockland, we had sufficient reserves, but our reserves, you'll find when we do the financial statements for this year, our reserves are getting to a point where I have some concern in terms of our flexibility. The council is correct, we had some flexibility, but as we've incurred deficits over the last few years, we've reduced the amount of reserves that's able, that's able to pay for those deficits.
And we'll go back to the point that I keep making, but I never seem to get an answer and satisfy. If we were to fire someone, we'd have to pay a lot of severance to those people. Where would that money come from? And we've done it in the past 3 and 1/2 years. Where did the money come from that cannot come out of the same pocket as this?
Mr. Keel. We don't have a surplus carry forward, which we are getting, we still have one, but the amounts will clarify, but there, it's going to be around 200,000. So that, that surplus could be eaten up over time and if we had that situation, we would have to, we would have to issue supplementary taxation to pay for that.
So we would have to tax people if we were to fire someone and could pay for it?
If we did not have the money in reserves, absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you gotta get the money somewhere.
And there are municipalities, there are municipalities in Ontario, obviously in Canada and the US that have had to, have had to do that. We're not near that, but that's what we would have to do.
Well, maybe the county, the United Counties of Prescott and Russell can intervene in this in similar cases when we're talking, they might dip into their social services budgets. Well, we obtain our fair share of the United Counties even more and we've been receiving stipends from the United Counties of Prescott for the past 2 years where we ought not have received anything. So the county share, we're one of the biggest daycare centers or center operations in the United Counties, so we have to manage things accordingly. Well, if you think that we didn't charge enough in the past and that's why it contributes to deficit and now we have to increase all at once, a certain amount, we have to go with comparables then. Do you have comparables with other daycare centers? Each and every time, we bring to the town council's attentions details with regards to increases. I've even proposed increases in the past of over and above 10%, but this was whittled down to 5%. So you know, it's 2% less a year and then 3% another year, then accumulates. Now, we're up to that 10% threshold. I'm asking you to adopt option 3. It won't compel us to cut as much elsewhere. It will mitigate the increase of daycare fees by only 5%. Option 3 deals with 11% increase. Well, let's go on with another option, one at a time. Now, if we go to with 4% or 6%, that will cumulatively amount to 11% or 12%, that will take care of about half of the cuts that have been suggested. So we'll proceed with an increase and cut all of those proposed cuts by half. Well, you stated that you needed, we needed to come up with the money. Yes, but we're cutting a lot of services if we cut this, we're impacting a lot of people. Even though it increases by some 5% or 11% this year, it's going to increase. If it increases by 5% next year, it might be 12, 13, 14. There's a lack of money somewhere along the line in the system. We have no choice. If we apply a Band-Aid solution this year, if we vote for 5% or 2%, it's never going to get any easier. So let's adopt option 3. I'm ready, I'm ready to take a decision. Let me ask a question here. In other services that we're overseeing, Mr. Laverre, you know the answer to that question. How many youngsters play hockey at the city of Rockland, Clarence and Rockland? Approximately 150. Also, take into account the children from Clarence Creek. Do we supply money for the running of the arenas? Are taxes paying for 150 hockey players or youngsters to play hockey? And we have 800 children? Yes, but we don't have the budget. We have to come up with money somewhere now, Council of Laverre. That's where the question, herein lies the question that needs to be resolved. If we have sufficient money, next year, we'll come up with money. Are you saying that we should take the grant given to the junior hockey team and take that money and give it to the daycare centers? So you're going to be giving grants to daycare center people rather than the sports people? Well, that's what, in the process of doing right now, we're incurring a deficit here and then we're incurring a deficit with arenas. Well, it's not a bad idea to go half and half, yes, but the budgets are already earmarked and the money's paid out. So checks were handed out last week or 2 weeks ago, I believe. Well, at a certain point in time, we have no choice. We have to make ends meet. Unfortunately, we should have increased daycare fees by some 3%, 4% in the previous years. It would have hurt less, but we have no choice because next year, we'll be facing with a potential increase of 11, 12, or 13. Next, we're already up to 10%. Well, next year, we might be 15%. Well, not necessarily because they've moved venues, 3 daycare centers have moved, you know. In any event, look, we have to take a vote. I'd like to call for a registered vote. Who's in favor of option number 3? Option number 3, 11% increase. Who's in favor? Council of Shoignard? I'm in favor. Council of Zant? In favor. Council of Laverre? Opposed. Council of Belleguet? In favor. Council of Laverre? Opposed. And I'm in favor of 11%. Option 3. I'm in favor. Seconded by Council of Zant? You're in favor of seconding the resolution? You're seconding this? Fine. So it's an increase of 11%. Seconded by Council of Shoignard? Let's hope that next year, we won't come up with a further increase. Let's hope that if there is an increase next year, that may be a minimum of increase imposed. You know, we have to take hard decisions at times, that's what we're elected to do. In any event... In any event, you know, if we're to cut down on supporting events for our youngsters, I'm going to ask the counties if there's any leftover money from any surplus funds. If we manage to obtain further funds of the United Counties, it would impact and lower the 11% potential increase. Look, the invoices are before you, Mr. Levaire. You know exactly how much we have to pay. I'm completely in agreement. As I said earlier on, if we don't proceed with an increase this year, we'll proceed with another increase next year. We've voted on this. Item 8.5, final adoption or adoption by law for final taxes 2018. Fine, so we're dealing with 9.5 now? Fine. When you're going to read the resolution, it's going to be, you're going to read option three rather than read option one that corresponds with an 11% increase with regards to daycare center fees. Fine. Please, Council of Zant, could you please read the resolution? Be resolved that bylaw number 2018-39 being a bylaw to provide for the adoption of tax rates and to provide for penalty and interest and default of payment thereof for 2018 be adopted as recommended in report number FIN 2018-012 with schedule A of option three. Seconded by Council of Belleguet, any questions? Has this bylaw, was it prepared with the intent or with the view of incurring a 2% increase? In fact, it reflects the original increase of 2.84%. That was, did not take an 11% increase. It's an increase of 2.84% basic translation. And because daycare centers are increased by some 18%, we don't have to raise the basic tax rate. So the mill rate that is shown here, well, it would be 2.84. That's what's reflected here, yes, as of option, as per option three. 2.84 will be the final mill rate increase, and that's it. All those in favor then? Fine, thank you. Let's go on now to item 9.2, fire station construction project. Council of Zant, be it resolved that the committee adopt bylaw 18-2003 to enter into a contract with ASCO in the amount of $1,172,586 HSD to perform construction work with regards to fire stations and paramedical stations for Clarence Rockland and Bourgette as recommended, and also be it resolved that the director of services to protection to property and individuals pay out $100,000 with regards to the contents of the fire station, and be it resolved that we grant the chief administrative officer power to spend the remainder of the funds left to pay out for contingencies as set out in report 2018, ADM 2018-012. Seconded by Council of Belleguet, questions? Go ahead, Dejean. As I mentioned earlier on, Mr. Mayor, I took a look at last year's budget, and then I looked into that budget, and then we brought modifications to that budget, but what intrigues me is this. Our bylaw enforcement officers don't have an office anymore. They were supposed to make use of the fire station amenities and building. Now, the fact that they don't have any space afforded them, do we need to come up with office space for them here in Rockland? Secondly, both of the paramedic stations will cost us $2,861,267. Yes, yes. Will obtain $170,000, some odd thousand dollars per year to offset this. Will that help us pay our long-term debt? How much of a long-term debt remainder will we have, will we be facing each and every year? What, Mr. Year? Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. It's for a 25-year period, and we estimate the rate. Well, the one that we have before us here right now is 3.06%. Yes. Well, we'll take a look at where the market stands when this needs to be dealt with. When we come up with an estimate, let's say what the rate will be, we're not sure as to the rate right now, but we've come up with an estimate of 3.06% because we'll be renting that out by $20.50 per square foot to the United Counties. Well, that's taken into account all associated expenditures. I just wanted to make sure that we covered our expenditures with regards to the two paramedic stations, as well also. The operational costs are paid out by the United Counties of Prescott-Russell. Another question that I had, Mr. Mayor, was this, is this. We cut $366,414,414 for landscaping and asphalting, and definitely will incur further expenditures. We can't open up fire stations without performing further work with regards to landscaping and paving, especially the one as it relates to the Bourgette station. Well, instead of putting up support walls, they put up sort of like a support jacket made out of riprock that costs a lot less than a supporting wall. They put in less decorative trees, a bit more lawn, a little bit more grass. Well, the estimate was quite high for next year. Look, $183,000, Mr. Lallon, you can sew a lot. Landscaping, grass and shrum, flagpole, curbs retaining wall. Now, after the presentation that we obtained, that's what worries me, the retaining wall. Mr. Mayor, Council of Lallon, the majority of this amount is divided up throughout many envelopes with regards to asphalt and landscaping. Now, with regards to Bourgette and others, the orientation of the fire stations was changed as opposed to the original plans. Now, with regards to Rockland, the proposed building will be located closer to the roadway, so less asphalt up in front and less filling at the back. The wall, the supporting wall, as Mr. Leonard has stated, it will be replaced by a geotextile construction that's going to be less expensive. In the case of the Bourgette station, instead of resorting to drive shoes, what we've done is that we've backed up the building. It's going to be much more secure as opposed to where we are at present. And there's less paving at the back, less fill at the back. That reduces the cost, the overall costs. That's where the amounts come from, the way in which fire stations are located on properties on which they stand. We see, these people have nothing to say with regards to this $120,000. That's with regards to the furniture inside, the station's content. Council of Zant? Well, my problem with this, Mr. Mayor, is this. The fire station is our responsibility, and to delegate to the chief administrative officer power to spend available funds is improper. I believe it's incumbent upon us to do so. She can come up to council with the recommendations, but the order is upon us to decide. We could modify this to read as follows, that it be left to council to decide upon how contingency funds will be spent. Council of Keo, well, the reason why we came up with this recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is that details are set out in appendix one and two, you see? Now, the fire chief will take a look at this list, and other department heads will take a look at this list, and will go by priority by priority, on a priority by priority basis to decide what needs to be done. Well, one of the things we can decide is this, the contingency fees. We talked about heated floors. You know, it doesn't cost all that much to put in piping under the flooring, and if we decide to install heating, well, the piping is already there. So we can tap into the contingency funds in that way. We're talking about $500,000 and some odd thousand dollars worth of contingency funds. How about the $120,000? Is this what we're referring to? No, the $120,000 refers to the second item in paragraph number four, I see, Mr. Vinnev. Well, the contingency fees that are proposed, Mr. Mayor, are within, fall within the parameters of the budgetary envelope that was imposed upon us by council originally, in light of the cuts that were brought in to have us honor budgetary constraints. Now, this amount, now, the reason why the proposal is worded this way is that it will allow us to preserve the work schedule. We have a fairly busy work schedule, and it will allow us to close up the building's envelope before the cold weather sets in. So if we have to come up with contingency proposals to council for a budget that's already been approved, we run the risk of prolonging this. Well, you see, it reads here as follows, remaining funds from the contingency fees. So there's nothing that prevents anyone to come to council and inform us as to where this remaining contingency fee goes to. I don't want things to increase to 10% once everything is over and done with. No, our proposal was reduced from 10 to 5, of course. Given the consultation that we've entered into, or talked, we've entered with the contractor, it helped us to taper the work that needed to be performed to meet our needs. It doesn't prevent town council there to tap into remaining funds. Well, at least we should have an update each and every time that we get together, and we could forward this update to this gentleman here. That would be information that you could make use of. If everyone is in agreement, we could resort to this update mechanism that Mrs. Shoignard is proposing. Well, that's fine. Mr. Mayor, I need someone to move and second this, what we're proposing as a solution. Well, we move then that we have an update with regards to contingency funds or fees that need to be forwarded, just for information purposes and not for approval purposes. That's right, for information purposes. A list of expenditures with regards to contingencies with remaining funds. So that means that the chief administrative officer has the right to spend without us giving the okay to spend whatever amount. Look, with regards to piping concerning heated floors, well, piping is going to come out of the contingency funds. I would want it to delay the construction of the building, but those decisions can be taken at the very start of the project, the very beginning of the project. I know it doesn't have any impact on the construction, but the majority of things we're discussing right now with regards to the heating system and the heated floor, that, those are unforeseen expenditures that we'll need to meet towards the end of the construction cycle and not at the beginning. I just don't, I want to be made aware of what needs to be spent. Why don't we be informed of what needs to be spent? And for what purpose? Immediately? Well, through an update mechanism, we can do so. It seems, Mr. Vinnev, that we can be made aware of your needs on a regular basis also if we meet on a regular basis every month. Well, we do so already, but we need to come up with a decision, you know. Well, I'm just saying that, you know, if we come up with a 5% contingency cap, that we don't need the say-so of the chief administrative officer to go ahead with this. Now, all we need to do is say the following. We need to approve it before it's spent, once we are given an update as to what needs to be spent. Now, you know, if we need to plant trees, we're not just talking about planting trees. You see, contingency fees or contingencies will not necessarily be spent completely at the end of a given project. We might look at the possibility of installing piping for radiated heating. Well, you know, let's do so. All we need is to send an email to everyone. If that's what you want, that's fine, no problem, we'll accommodate you. If that's information that you need, that's fine. If we have to react, that we be in a position to be able to do so, you know, and then you can call for a special meeting to question maybe a decision that we might take. Don't forget that there are some decisions we might not take before a certain date because we'll wind up in a lame duck position there prior to municipal elections. So a given project can continue on. So can we agree that with regards to contingency fees, that it be, that we receive updates for information purposes only? That's fine then, Mr. Mayor. That there be a list for approval, but for information purposes, that is forwarded to you, and that it be forwarded to you at town meetings, and to prepare a list of things to be done prior that they be done? Well, require the approval of an amount over and above, let's say, a certain threshold. Well, we already have that provision that's been approved. If I'm the only one that finds it weird to give delegation to the chief administrative officer power to do this, and I'll just keep quiet? Well, we have to have confidence in our chief administrative officer to spend what needs to be spent and properly. Yes, but in some instances, we came into further discussions because we were not on the same page, so we'll have to enter into other general discussions. There are certain priorities that we deem priority situations that the town administration might not deem priority situations. I believe that it's proper to have a list of contingency fees or contingency funds, and we need a list of contingencies. Monsieur Vinnev? Yes, there's a list that was eliminated, and it stands to reason that there are things that we'd like to bring back to your attention, such as blinds to be installed for our windows. These are things that were cut. Paper toilet holders, or toilet paper holders, should I say? Those are things that are over and above the priority list that was initially set. A consultant just told me the following. Come up with a list or a spreadsheet that is handed to council every two weeks. That's really not a problem, and to make you aware as to where we are with regards to contingency funding, if we resorted to contingency funding. That would be the best thing. We'd be informed continuously. We know exactly where we are at right now. Something that might be a bit easier also, Mr. Mayor, is this. If we'd come up with an initial list, if they take money from the contingency fund, this is what the first thing they tap into would be, and the second thing they tap into would be, and so on and so forth, so that we may pre-approve it or approve it in advance, so we wouldn't, you know, face, we wouldn't be dealing with any surprise-type situations, if you wish. Well, in any event, the chief administration, administrator chief, the CAO is here each and every meeting. Chief administrative officer is in attendance at every town meeting. If there are some expenditures that we're not in agreement with, certainly she'll be able to give us proper information. Well, if you are to tap into contingencies, what would you view as your priorities? The first thing, for example, would be if you decide to put in piping to heat up the floor, if the second thing is if there's any money left, this is the second set of things we purchase, and the third, and the fourth, and the fifth. Let's come up with a list, and we're all in agreement, depending on how much money there's left, we might go forward or not. It would avoid us to attend meeting upon meeting upon meeting. It would avoid us to attend meeting upon meeting upon meeting to decide something, one thing or another. Monsieur Villeneuve, I've noted here that you're already aware that we'll be contending with contingency fees. Contingency fees are unforeseen fees that come up, the execution of a contract. Now, installing piping in asphalt is not a contingency. It's something that's already forced, planned for, yes. We've done everything we, we've done everything we could to prevent unforeseen expenditures. Often, when we haven't started digging a foundation, we don't know what lies in the ground when we're building, when we're resorting to construction of a building. So that's why, if we come up with a predetermined list, it defeats the reason for having contingencies. So before saying we can make use of contingency fees to pay out a specific item that was not unforeseen, but that was contained in the original list of things that were removed for construction expenditures. It's difficult for us to come up with a list and say, this is what will follow if there are some items, let's say, from one to 20, that need to be paid for. And at a certain point in time, item number 19 needs to be paid out first. Well, the resolution states for the purpose of spending remaining funds within the contingency funds. So if there are, there are any remaining funds, that's why we have this contingency. We might be, you know, caught up by an event that's unforeseen, as Monsieur Villeneuve has stated, that will compel us to tap into a contingency fund. But the resolution does state this clearly. But once again, if contingency amounts have not all been fully utilized, but ought to have been utilized for other things that are deemed important, well, they, you know, they might make use of this to put in blinds on windows or a dish. If there are some things that can be added on at the end of the process that was, that were initially cut at the beginning, then we can make use of this contingency fund. But let's maintain these contingencies. We always come up with surprises during the construction process. But if there are part of expenditures that are made use of to add things that have been initially removed by keeping an amount for unforeseen circumstances or unforeseen things to be paid for, what we can say to the chief administrative officer, if there are no unforeseen circumstances, no surprise, surprises, and we wind up with a surplus, where can we use, or where can we make, well, use that surplus and spend it on? So we could, see, if there are, well, maybe, Mr. Mayor, someone might propose what can be written in the resolution. Well, only the last part is impacted. If not all contingency funds are used for other means other than spending for, yeah, and it's important also to note that if no unforeseen circumstances or no unforeseen contingencies come up, we might have a list of amounts suggested to us where funds could be spent. I can make a resolution to this effect, Mr. Mayor, that would simplify things. All right? Mrs. Chouagnier has a resolution. I move the following, Mr. Mayor. Once the amounts allocated to contingency fees are not fully utilized for emergency situations or for unforeseen contingencies, that the remainder of expenditures be presented to council for approval purposes. I'd like to second this. But you'd also mention, Mr. Mayor, that there would be new unforeseen circumstances. Well, I'd be quite surprised if we would wind up with no surprises, but still. So the proposed resolution is now off the table. The contingency fund, yes, will be used in keeping with the priorities that are set out in the list of priorities. So, Mr. Mayor, that's in keeping with Councilor Chouagnier, with what Councilor Chouagnier has suggested? We need someone to support this, supported by Councilor Lallon? Mr. Mayor, can I suggest this? Because everybody is in agreement, or seems to be in agreement. We should at least keep the piping in the asphalt for the, well, yes, and that the piping be installed. We talked about fifty-six, we talked about six, fifty-six thousand dollars to modify the heating system. How much would it cost us to put in the piping for radial heating? That amongst the priorities discussed or contemplated? Look, we're going to, if we're to change all contingencies, Mr. Mayor, that amongst the priorities that are set out in contingencies, that the installation of piping for the heating system be prioritized. Mrs. Chouagnier, all we need to do is to mention to the department to go ahead to install the piping, and they'll forward us a report to this effect afterwards. We're not going to set foot on the construction site and oversee this work. With regards to piping, we'll see to the department. We're all in agreement that this piping be installed in the flooring. It's best that, look, listen, we're going, we're not going to start discussing costs with regards to this. Okay. Once the amounts allocated for contingency fees are not used for emergency situations, that a list be presented to council and that priorities with regards to contingency fees, that the installation of piping with regards to heating be considered. No, no, that's it, let's vote. I'm requesting a vote. No, but, Mr. Mayor, we're not talking about contingencies, we're talking about unforeseen circumstances, unforeseen instead of emergency situation. Now, I'm requesting a vote. All those in favor? Thank you then. My God. Here we are. Now, water provision project for La Nation. Mr. Levert? Yes, sir. Whereas the Clarence Rogland and Limage Water Services study is complete and demonstrates significant advantages in proceeding with this project, more particularly with the Limage sector. Be it resolved that council authorizes the director of infrastructure and planning to retain legal services in order to negotiate the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city of Clarence and Rogland for the supply of drinking water to the city of Limage. And that council authorizes the infrastructure director and planning to implement the protocol of understanding once it has been fine-tuned. Seconded, any questions? Councilor Lallon? Mr. Mayor, I took a very, very close look at this. It'll cost, ratepayers, if we go ahead with this, a minimum of sixteen million dollars. Sir Leonard, I'll have you explain this situation. Councilor Levert, if we don't supply water to the nation, it's going to cost us even more. When, what year? During the same years, twenty-two million dollars in 2025 as compared to sixteen million dollars in 2027. So there's a savings of some six point six and, some hundred thousands of dollars' worth of savings. And if we take a look at the complete scope of the project, we're saving approximately eleven million dollars. So there's an advantage to distribute water to La Nation. They pay a cost of our, the improvement to our network. Councilor Chouagnier? Well, we discussed this last Monday. Because La Nation also had their town meeting, can we have an idea as to what was discussed at that meeting? Where their goal was the same as ours? To come up with an agreement in principle? Well, Mr., could you explain to us what we're doing? We're approving, we're deciding, entering into negotiations with them. Well, the purpose of this resolution is the following. Is to come up with an agreement in principle with La Nation township. Now, what this means is that we'll be, you know, deciding upon the major guidelines that will lead to an official agreement. It might take a year, even more, to negotiate the final agreement. It depends on those involved in discussions with regards to this agreement. Now, if council is not in agreement with negotiations or how the project is proceeding, we might put a stop to it until such time as we deem it appropriate to restart negotiations. All we're doing is starting the process, or starting up the process. We don't want municipalities to waste their time on this. We want to define in a concrete fashion where we're heading, what our goal will be. I believe that Mrs. Chouagnier has complained that it's getting a bit too hot here. Can we lower the? Well, if she's too comfortable there, this meeting will last two logs, we might as well keep the heat up just a tad bit. Any other questions at present, Mr. Mayor? With regards, if we take a look at the possibility of supplying water to Limage, we have to do a lot more work than improving our water treatment plant because there's thirteen five-hundred cubic meters per day that we process. We make use of regularly, regularly of eight point five. And during the summertime, we make use of ten thousand square meters per day. So we have a three thousand five-hundred capacity during the summertime, and at other times, we have seven thousand square feet available. Now, when we look at the possibility of increasing the water treatment capacity, we're asking to put in a bigger piping on Edward, on Saint Jean, on Carre, on Bouvier. And I might, I might be forgetting other streets that are involved. But our minimum with regards to the water treatment plan is eight point four million dollars. Mr. Mayor, once again, we're not incurring additional expenditures. We're reducing our expenditures with regard to this. There are certain expenditures that need to be made and certain improvements to be brought to, let's say, the Bouvier reservoir with regards to piping and the Chenney reservoir. And they're made of expenditures entirely stemming from the La Nation project. So we have to take a look at the project's total cost, the total estimated cost of that particular project, and compare it to the estimated cost of that project when we, once we're called upon to distribute water to La Nation. That's where our comparables base lies. Now, if you gauge consumption from one day to another, you've also relied upon the daily flow of water. Well, you know, we don't make use of those components to come up with an analysis. This is not what the agreement will be based upon. And the agreement is far from being arrived at. This is just an agreement that will lead to talks, that will further lead to another formal agreement down the line. It's just greenlighting the process. I don't know why we're called upon to pay millions and millions today. Look, we'll be called upon to pay millions and millions later on. And we might partner in with La Nation or stand alone. Without La Nation, you have twenty-two million dollars to pay in 2027. From this point on to 2027, you need to put in those improvements. Because 2027 is the stellar year where everything has to be put into place and implemented. Now, you have twenty-two million dollars to spend prior to 2027 without the Nation's participation. And prior to 2027 with the Nation's participation, we will only have to spend sixteen million dollars. And so they're the ones that are paying for this also. So long-term debts that will occur. And they'll also incur a much bigger long-term debt. But the fact is that we'll be supplying them with a certain amount of water. It will be called upon to supply them with a certain amount of water sooner or later. From this point on, and ten years down the road, we'll have to. I'd rather spend it earlier than later. It's going to cost us much more ten years from now. Right, as things stand right now, we're greenlighting the fact that we're entering into negotiations with them. At this point in time, Mr. Mayor, we have about six million dollars left in the Water Reserve Fund right now. And we'll have a bit more in future years that will help us to pay for those associated costs. We won't be tapping into all of the debt. And we'll, in the meantime, we'll be connecting Elliot Creek and all other cities, all, and many other villages or developments along the way. All those in favor, carry then, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Belanguet? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, if it's at all possible, to, I'm just going to, let's just ask if we can proceed to the appointment of an individual? I just, okay, well, that's fine. Is there a bylaw that you'd like to withdraw from the list of bylaws that we need to enact right now? No, I have a few, one or two to withdraw. Item, well, bylaw ten point three, for example. Ten point two, ten point three, ten point five, and ten point seven. Ten point three is money that we'll receive from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Yes, but there's also an agreement that comes up to play with regards to this. I see. Be it resolved? Okay then. Councilor Levert, if you'd care to read the municipal bylaws? Jeez, I stood ready to read them, my, Mr. Mayor, well, fine then. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be implemented. Ten point one, 2018 dash forty-eight, to regulate the management of Clarence Rogland Waste Disposal Site. Item ten point four, bylaw 2018 dash forty-nine, to sign an agreement with Bridgill, three-two-two-three-seven-zero-zero, Canada Incorporated, for the rental of the land situated at fourteen fifty-two Poubelle. Bala ten point six, 2018 dash fifty-one, to sign a contract with Terra Flex Limited for the LED streetlight installation. Item ten point eight, bylaw 2018 dash fifty-six, to appoint a municipal law enforcement officer. Ten point nine, 2018 dash fifty-seven, zoning bylaw amendment with regard to seven seventy-one Laudry Street, seconded by Councilor Simar. Monsieur Metteau? We've already approved that particular bylaw that you were waiting for us to approve. Fine. Councilor Lallon, item ten point two. Oh, congratulations, by the way. Mr. Deau, could you please stand up and introduce yourself? Because you're under contract with the town for the next week. Mr. Mayor, let me introduce myself. I'm the new manager of the Bala Enforcement Department. So you saw the light and decided to start working for us, right? Instead of working for the Nation Township. I spent eleven years catering to the needs of the Nation municipality, and I was also a Bala Enforcement Officer. He's my replacement, and I believe you made a very good choice. Congratulations then. Make, I'll make sure that I mention this to Mr. Sainte-Moët when I see him next Wednesday. Thank you, gentlemen. Councilor Lallon, item ten point two. Just a moment, Mr. Mayor, hold on. Could we rehash the agenda? Because we forgot to include this particular bylaw, I believe. Yeah, that's the amount of money that we received for the flooding damages we had last year. Yes. Someone could second this? Seconded by Councilor Simar, all those in favor, carry then, that's fine. 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 Yet we just added this, $100 and some odd thousand. All right, go ahead, councillor Lallon. I can read it in English. Whereas the Corporation of the City of Clarence Rockland deems it expedient to amend bylaw 215-2015-176.
...bylaw to update daycare fees to establish new land site fees and update the ice rental fees further to the adoption of the 218 budget as well as change the format of the slab rental fee.
Well, do I have someone to second this proposed motion? Councillor Simar? Yes? Because that will impact the daycare center situation, yes. Well, the reason I ask that this be discussed separately is that the ice rink time, as I'm told, is rented out at a much higher price than elsewhere. Now, given the position that we've taken tonight, where we have to increase ice rink rental time? Well, that's a directive that was given to us through the budgetary talks that were had in the past. This item will come, will be implemented as of September, next season, next season, next September. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to specify the following, that with regard to this resolution, this bylaw, to adopt Schedule C, the one that I handed to all of you with regard to daycare centers, this came from me. Those are my figures. Fine then, fine. All those in favor? Carry, carry, fine, fine. We're skipping from one item to another. Let's go on now to item 10.3. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be adopted? Bylaw 2018-47, to sign an agreement with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario in order to participate in Ontario's Main Street Revitalization Initiative? Yes. Not just Rockland, but the Ontario's Main Street Revitalization Initiative, seconded by councillor Zant. My question, Mr. Mayor, is the following. I'm wondering, this $59,330 amount that we'll be receiving, can we not apply it to facilitate the installation of lights on Laurier Streets or throughout Rockland? Because we're talking about the revitalization of Main Street. Well, Mr. Mayor, really, it's much too early to take a decision given the phase we're at of the project. We've just hired a consultant to come up with a plan and concepts. They'll be identifying all of the steps to be taken on the projects to be followed through with regards to the Laurier Street Revitalization Project. Lights are not the first component in the revitalization process to be implemented. They might be said the second or third in priority. But this certainly will be part and parcel of the revitalization project. We've mentioned that, are the lights included in that? Well, you see, we can't replace the lights in a vacuum, for example. We might have to reposition the lights. There might be some benches put in here and there. To make use of those funds to install streetlights before having a report as to the project to be implemented is ill-advised at present. But it's going, this, this report will target the commercial sector. That's right. Well, commercial sectors everywhere, but the revitalization, revitalization project will target this time around Main Street. So the application was processed for Laurier Street needs right now, right? Did we not also adopt an amount last year for that purpose? Right? Wasn't there an amount set aside this year for Laurier Street repairs or renovations? Well, there was, I don't know exactly how much. There was already an amount. We'd applied for an amount to meet the needs of buildings concerning revitalization, up to $10,000, I think. But that was cut. So there are no specific budgets set aside for the revitalization of the embellishment of the downtown core? No. The plan this year is to come up with a concept, a plan, and we'll implement projects stemming from that plan, that concept with regards to the 2019 budget. You know, with a view to tapping into funds in 2019 budget. We have to start somewhere with this. I know we need to commission studies, but we need to start off somewhere. In any event, $59,000 or $57,000 is not a big amount with regard to, not a big amount concerning this, in any event. Let's go on now to item 10.5. 10.5, Mr. Mayor? Referred to the previous 10.3 bylaw. So I've already obtained an answer. I'll still read it regardless, that the following bylaw be adopted, Mr. Mayor? To sign a contract with Guivay International Company for the purchase of new LED streetlight fixtures, seconded by councillor Belanguet. All those in favor? Thank you. Carry. Item 10.7 now. Again? Yes, bylaw 2018-55, to award, again, to award a contract to Hampson Consulting Limited for support in developing a new development charge and bylaw policies for 2020. Seconded by councillor Belanguet. Now, the reason I ask this to be withdrawn for particulars discussions is that it's going to cost $59,950. It's not really the cost I'm objecting to, but I'm wondering why we were proceeding with this right now and let's not, why not wait later on? But we're given a two-year period here to do this. No. There's 2019, and we're due to come up with the results either in January, February 2020, February 2020. That's why we have to move on it now. Well, the last one we acted on dates back to 2015. Yes, and we have to implement this on a five-year basis, every five years. So we have to start up the process now so that the new council that's voted in will move on this as of February 2020. The municipality will set out the priorities with regards to these projects, and the company will determine the costs associated with those? Yes, yes. We'll come up with a management team that will manage the project, and the consultant will help us through, will guide us through the steps to be taken, you know, in view of the existing provincial laws and specifications and directives set out by the province that will help us to fully implement the project. Also, we need to commission a study for baseball facilities in Manica, the words, next year. Yes. All right, confirmatory bylaw 10.10? Well, we've already voted on this. Well, that's the grant for flooding relief. Let me read it, if you'll allow me to do so. Thank you. Seconded by councillor Chouagnier. Any questions? All those in favor? Carry. Thank you then. Confirmatory bylaw, councillor Levaire? Be resolved that bylaw 2018-158, being confirmatory bylaw of all those bylaws that were enacted for the regular meeting of town council, be adopted. Seconded by councillor Zant. All those in favor? Carry. Adjournment 906. Thank you.